Welcome, this is the February 22nd, 2024 Planning Board Hearing. We'll have a roll call, please.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity is not here at the moment. Secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
And Board Member Fulham is absent.
Great, so we have a quorum. Can you please join us for the Pledge Allegiance? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation under our individual liberties just as well. Minutes, Gloria?
We do not.
Minutes, I think we're probably up to date.
Yeah, we just don't have the last meeting. Excuse me, the last meeting.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda, Seth, that's yours, it's Wave Center for Veterinarian Emergencies at 1054 Montalk Highway, Southampton.
Very good, it's my pleasure to present my first draft report, staff report. We have an action deadline of March 28th, 2024. This is the Wave Center for Veterinary Emergencies. It is located at 1054, and it is a 1.39 acre parcel for a little over 60,000 square feet. It's between Willow and Scuttle Hole Road on Montalk Highway. As we can see, it has a certificate of occupancy from 2004 for the front building. There are three uses, because of its size, that were allowed. In the middle is a irrigation supply storage building, here, and in the back is a cell phone tower by Homeland Towers, which also has a certificate of compliance. The adjacent properties are the bridge, which you might recall, which was recently had a change of tenancy in 2022. To the north is S&amp;P haulers, waste. Basically, they're storing vehicles, and they do maintenance on vehicles there, and there's some sorting going on of garbage in this area here. Then to the, then we have the LIRR to the northwest, and Montalk Highway obviously has the frontage. What the site application is for, there's a special exception. We have a new use, which is for the building up front. It is a one-story metal building, 3,751 square feet. We have pre-existing parking of 27 spaces, and the applicant would like to convert that front building, and there will be no other work going on except for that conversion. So it is all interior work. The new building up front would be 3,000 square feet of veterinary hospital and 750 square feet of office space. In terms of SECR, since this is all interior, interior, excuse me, there's no structural change, so it is a type 2 action. There was a public hearing held on the February 8th, no comments were made. Our office sent out a number of referrals. They basically are some, similar to what you've heard many times before. I can go through them quickly. The Department of Public Safety and Fire Prevention would like the standard, standards of not impeding emergency vehicle access, that the number shall be posted, that the utility shall not be obstructed, that the dumpsters shall be enclosed in a minimum of five feet from the building, a key box is required, and they pointed out that the lot is served by water mains and a fire hydrant.
And where is the dumpster on this property?
I believe it is right in here. I can show you on the site plan if you wish.
Is it shared by the?
I assume it's, I haven't seen any other ones. It seems to me this is the one for the property. There is not another one shown on the site plan.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I acknowledge Vice Chair Finity has arrived.
Right.
Then moving on to the Southampton Town Engineer. His recommendation is that the existing sanitary system be reviewed in order to determine if it has the capacity for the proposed use. I tried to establish when that sanitary system was put in, and the records I could, I found went back to 2004, and it was the same sanitary system that's depicted on the current site plan.
And do they need any special requirements as a veterinarian emergency facility?
If they do, I, it hearkens on to the Department of Health Services, saying if you need to apply for, they need to apply for a commercial wastewater.
No, it's not wastewater, it's, I'm thinking of.
Sanitary.
Deposing of medical waste, et cetera.
Ah, I had left that under, that is up to the state, state rules. I don't know if, I will look into that.
We'll get to it, Lisa, just.
But on the sanitary, on the sanitary system, though, is the use of this building so different from what was existing before that they will require an upgrade to the system? Do you know the sanitary flow is the same or higher?
I would think it probably wouldn't be. I think they have to go to Health Department.
Right, it was dry use before, it was a retail store, and now it is, is this considered a wet use, Anthony? Do you know, a veterinarian facility?
You'd imagine so.
I don't know the answer to that question, but I suspect that the sanitary flow calculations would be different for a veterinary office, then.
Okay.
We can certainly confirm that.
Okay, we'll confirm that for you, certainly. Let's see, moving on to the Department of Transportation. If there were no proposed curb cuts, have been made by the applicant, and they simply stipulated that if so, they need to be notified, and a permit would need to be issued. And then there were some, the Fire District and the Architectural Review Board did not weigh in, I guess, out of their purview. And again, repeating myself, the Department of Health Services has not received a commercial wastewater application, and if, they would need to be permitted as well. In terms of compliance with the comprehensive plan, we, I have found that there is, covenants have been filed for all the, all three properties that would allow for cross-access. However, it is not depicted on the current site plan, so that would be at the discretion of the Planning Board if they would need that, I assume. Let's see. Then furthermore, that the ZBA weighed in on November 16th, 2023, and that was due to the fact that this is, is askew to the property line, so the necessary setbacks were granted variances. And then, one outstanding issue that we needed to bring up was the, the, there is a certificates, certificate of compliance for the Homeland Tower. However, it has not been issued a certificate of occupancy, and that is due to the fact that a maintenance bond was never filed for, and there was no plan submitted to this Planning Board. So this was an opportunity to close that chapter out for that part of the parcel, excuse me, for the site.
Excuse me, so these three businesses are leasing from an owner, so we have owner's certification?
Yes, that's my understanding, yes. Moving on, looking at the general standards. Is it in harmony? It is in harmony, as, only insofar as it is a special, special exception, and will need approval as such. The plot area is sufficient and appropriate. As I mentioned, it's sixty, over 60,000 square feet, so they are granted three primary uses at 20,000 square feet per use. So that is in compliance. Again, we have a cell phone tower, a irrigation storage, and now a veterinary emergency office. The next one would be the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties. I had mentioned that the cross-access is in the, in the covenants that I discovered for each of the properties surrounding them. Moving on, the proposed use is not within, within any, is not close to any church, school, or theater, so that is, that is, we are in compliance here. Then we have the, the definition of a veterinary hospital, which is not defined in the code, but it, it does comply with veterinary uses in general. The estimated traffic.
Wait, can you just go back to that? There's no animal hospital in our code?
It's simply veterinary services, offices, kennels, hospital.
The use is identified in our use table, but what they're asking about in that particular regulation, about the definition, the town's code doesn't actually have a definition in there. You'd be surprised how few definitions are in the code.
So you can add that to the to-do list, right?
You'd be surprised, but yeah, so, so what it's saying is, if there is no definition specific in your code, is the use consistent with the general accepted definitions of such a use?
Thank you.
Not specifically called out, but falling under veterinary services, I guess was my Moving on to access to the site, they are not, the applicant is not going to change any of the access to ingress or, or egress, so everything is staying the same at the site, so it has been accepted prior, and the prior special exceptions. The curb cuts, again, none are proposed. Off-street parking, the, the new use has the same, one per 100 and, one, one per 180 of square feet of gross floor area, so the amount of parking would stay the same, and that's 20, we have 27 parking spots on the, the lot. In terms of adequate buffer and screening, there, there is sparse vegetation on this lot, there is no, the applicant is not asking to change it. However, maybe this would be an opportunity for the Planning Board to, to look at the Adequate provision for the collection to disposal of stormwater. Again, there's no alteration to the, to the site in that, in those regards, so the standard would be met. The outdoor sales, outdoor sales would not be permitted and is not asked for. And then we're moving on to the special conditions for veterinary services. We have three, and that would be protection from noise, odors, and unsightly appearance. This application meets that standard, and would also be subject to state and further state and local laws. Their govern, kennels and housing of animals.
Do you have any references to those that you can include?
I, I will dig into that, I don't. Then the second one would be, the structures are necessary, have the necessary setbacks. I believe that was addressed by the zoning board of appeals, and their granting of the November 16th decision. Cadavers and contaminated materials, again, would be subject to state, state law, which I will look to reference as well. That summer, that's the crux of the report.
Lisa?
Sorry, if we could just go back to item K, which is stormwater and sanitary.
Yes.
I mean, your response said, I would talk to a stormwater owner, but I think we just have to also find out what the sanitary implications are for the health department.
The sanitary implication, okay.
Maybe Lisa will just shed some light on that.
I have the supplier to enforce permits on behalf of the applicant. So with regards to the septic, I believe that it has been reviewed by squires and Holden as far as the sanitary design, and I can have them add that information to the plan that shows that we are compliant with the system that's in the ground. It is listed as a medical category, and so it is a little bit different flow design than what is retail, but again, I could have the surveyors add that to the, to the plan to show that calculation.
Is that something that would have to go back to the Health Department for confirmation? Or is that, I'm just curious, I don't know the answer.
So long as we're underneath the sanitary flow that was previously there, that's something that the Building Department would be making the decision about, and it's up to them at this time. But right now, they have not asked us to go back. We can, I can go get a confirmation from the Health Department.
I don't know, I'm asking.
But it's, it's up to the Building Department to make that call.
I'm wondering about showing cross-access. I don't, I don't know that needs to be implemented at this point, but I think it'd be nice to.
I think we looked at that. Seth, can you, can you open up the aerial a little bit now?
I had in the covenant, there was a 50-foot northerly border here, that was, this being about 35 feet to the, so there was some impact from sighting of the cell tower that seemed to impinge on the cross-access.
I think we looked, that's when we looked at it.
But of course, where is it going? You know, going to the east, it's going into a.
Their, their back storage area.
Going to an area of cars and trucks.
And then the other side, you're going into undeveloped areas. I mean, there's a phase two, I guess.
So between the two buildings is not.
They're like industrial buildings. They have no protect.
It was interesting, I wasn't, I, it was my first time delving into this, but they, each of the properties seems to refer to the northerly property line. It wasn't as if they, so I felt like it was a chain, what they.
The northern, really should be east-west.
Yes, just the north, right.
Along the realy line, the back, the back property line.
Yes, the back property line, but each one seemed to look to the next one above, and that was the cross-access. So I didn't see, there weren't covenants that stipulated the southern property had 50, from 50 feet to 100.
Well, I, I think it's worthwhile, in fact important, to make a cross-access plan for this area.
Yeah, maybe, I don't remember.
We could give a notation of it, but not actually impose it at this time, until everybody else has it, because you've got watermill lumber, two properties away, and you've got some other, you know, commercial uses that if at the time, everybody along here agrees, but to make us install it now is.
No.
We should dust off the 1990 watermill.
But what I would say is.
But, but we often, I mean, often don't have people install, but then in some instances we do, but.
So I don't know if the other site plans, adjacent site plans, had specific locations, but at the very least, we should note that there were future cross-access agreements, and maybe just get a future.
Future cross-access agreement.
Cross-access agreement as part of this application to whatever properties, and then, like we do with everything else, we could implement them when the time is appropriate.
From a plan.
Maybe, we'll, we'll look at that.
Yeah, run your covenants, or it might be sitting there.
Okay, take a look.
And then what about the tower in the back with a C of O? Are you?
They're working on it. They know that they need to resolve it and finish it up, and I've been after the owner to get the tower people to do it.
Who is the owner?
Glenn Olson. He's aware of it, the tower people are aware of it, they're just dragging their feet. But I understand that we can't close, for building purposes, our stuff out until that is resolved as well.
And I would really like to hear the Health Department.
Sure, I can add that information.
It just, that seems like a fairly big difference from a furniture store.
Other than that, I have no.
Okay, so, so we don't have any specifics, other than this broad definition of any housing of animals should all be in accordance with applicable state and local laws, so we don't, I don't know what that means, you know?
Okay, I will certainly look into that immediately.
And, and in that same line there, under special conditions, it says, and regulations governing kennels, and I know you said that the definition of a veterinary clinic is not in the town regulations, but I don't think this is a kennel.
No.
So maybe we need to try to figure out a, a phrase for that.
You refer to it as an emergency veterinarian service.
Hospital, correct. There's no boarding allowed, it'll be more off-hours, emergency services.
I mean, if they were doing operations.
But they wouldn't keep an animal overnight, or?
Right.
I would think they have to.
Yeah, but it's not an actual kennel where you can come, bring your dog for long periods of time.
Do we understand that?
Right, so there will be overnight emergency, keeping of animals here as necessary, but it's not a boarding facility.
Right.
Which some, some, I guess veterinary offices are.
And there's staffing there for animals that are there overnight?
I think old town, you can kennel your dog there, as well as take them for the emergency services and the regular veterinary services.
When is the action deadline for this?
It's not till March.
March 28th.
You know, my question is for the board, you know, because you prepared the resolution. Just, I, my, my big concern, you know, and I think she'd resolve, is the Health Department.
Exactly. Anthony, can you get it?
Do you need my voice as loud?
No, but.
You need your wisdom, Anthony, your wisdom.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'm just trying to travel loud. Exactly. That, that's my only concern, I hate leaving that.
It's our concern, too.
You know, opened, just because we have the time, let's just make sure.
Let's get some more detail on this, check the Health Department, and then come back.
That's fine.
We're not on action deadline.
No, no, the action deadline is March 28th.
We don't even need an extension resolution.
Good, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
And any information you want to provide to Seth in the meantime, is great.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming in.
I think this is number two, not number one.
The, the numbers are all.
229 Montalk LLC, Teresa. This is 2297 Montalk Highway, Bridgehampton. This is the Farrell Building in the historic area.
Good afternoon, how are you today? So we have received a request yesterday afternoon from the applicant's agent. They are requesting an extension of the action deadline until April 25th, which is approximately 60 days. They're considering redesign of their project plans. In the event that the redesign is substantially different from what we are seeing, have seen, we may need to have another pre-submission conference hearing, but obviously, I haven't seen anything, so we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but the resolution before you is to extend the action deadline until April 25th.
Do you know if the redesign is going to still have to go before the zoning board?
I don't know. Ideally, when you revise the project plans, they should be more conforming, so they may, they may require different relief, which is part of the reason why when we had the zoning board of appeals referral, that we had recommended that the zoning board postpone decision, until we had received formal site plan application, and we had started the SECR process. Because it is a type unlisted action, it does require, you know, does require a SECR review, and while you don't have to coordinate, it's, it's kind of important in this particular instance that we do, and we should, you know, receive that SECR coordination, and they should hold off on any decision until, until we've started that process. And I am assuming that at some point you'll want to seek lead agency for that project, because obviously, the majority of the issues that need to be addressed are planning issues rather than variance issues. But again, for today, we are looking at doing an action deadline extension, but you do have my draft report. If you have any comments, I'd love to hear some feedback on it in the meantime.
And because it will be a new design, I think we need another public hearing.
Yes, I'm assuming so, but obviously, once we get the redesigned project, then we would make that, you know, schedule that if it's substantially different.
And just be aware of absences of this board when you're, when you're scheduling stuff.
Okay.
Okay. So motion by George, second by Gloria, all in favor, closed abstention, six in favor, one absent. Number three is Hampton Six Realty Corp., Hampton Bays, 39 West Montalk Highway, Hampton Bays.
So the board might recall, last meeting, we went through the staff report and the draft resolution. Want to make, just look into a few, you know, issues, and then, there's the resolution and the original report in there. And actually, subsequent to that discussion, they did come in with the revised map, you know, showing over here the connection, actually details showing the parking being reorganized, one way in, one way out, some sidewalk changes that are being required by the TPW.
And no left turn?
Yeah, well, that'll be part of the thing, is that, well, I forgot to put in the resolution sign, it says no left turn. But they gave us the details in the back there, where they do the cross-connection, they're going to reorganize this parking.
It's going to be parallel, it's not going to be nose-in, is it? Or didn't we?
It's not diagonal, it's going to be, because it's two-way, so it's going to be 90-degree. And looking at, you know, this little sort of sidewalk there, we're right at the 24-foot aisle width, so that's why there wasn't much more room to do anything with that. We could have a discussion of whether or not 24 or 22 feet is sufficient, but when our engineers review these things, we look at the 24-foot aisle. But the good thing is that this will be reconfigured, this connection's going to be opened and implemented, and then the access on Montalk Highway is being addressed, so pretty good, I think, overall.
It might be helpful to augment the signage, to say, Montalk Highway west, westbound, you know, just so people leaving the center will go out to Good Ground Road, not try, they, in other words, know they can't make a left turn, similar to what we did in Bridgehampton Commons.
Yeah, they go to back and then come around Spring.
So we want them, we want to send them down to Good Ground, then left.
All right, so when we, when we get to that section, we'll put it in.
Yeah, yeah, just sort of sign it.
Yeah, so like I said, we went through all the issues last time. Kate had mentioned, you know, about possibly doing, getting rid of some parking here and doing another form of pedestrian, but we're sort of at our parking, you know, calculations, and we made, and we made the concessions by getting the public access easement, so I think we need the parking there at this stage of the game, just in my opinion. But if you look at the resolution, oh, that's hard to read, that came out dark, but I had grayed out under changes to the site plan per the Suffolk County Department of Public Burks, they showed those changes on here, actually, so.
That's okay.
So that's okay.
Provide the calculating.
Yeah, so the parking calculations just need to be revised, because they didn't account for their credit that they, they could get, so we'll have that. F, I changed it a little bit, we wanted to change, there is a, like a little crosswalk that goes from the sidewalk to the building, but as I said, the 1986 site plan called for a brick border with brick walk in this area. In the alternative, I say stamped concrete would be acceptable and accomplish the same thing, so.
Where, in the front?
Yeah, there's one right down the middle, from the sidewalk down the middle of the, you know, and just to.
Just cement?
Yeah, just sort of painted, so I thought, you know, we'll just incorporate that in there.
Is that in the parking lot itself, or?
Yeah, it's in the parking lot, goes through the parking lot, from the sidewalk to the building.
From the highway sidewalk.
Yeah. The landscaping, so what I am recommending, recommending, first of all, is with the reconfiguration, so we're going to have some new islands here, some landscaping. Some landscaping over here as well, and we looked at the street view, you've written, there's a lot of, the street trees are there in the back, but I recommend then putting in like a little row of shrubbery, you know, whatever it is, just to, you know, soften it up a little bit. So that's what that resolution says. I, again, we talk about sustainable features, you mentioned actually, and I did put in here, referencing the, the climate action plan.
But is there any?
We need more. Right now, we're giving, offering helpful hints, is what we're doing.
Helpful hints.
Kind of like the IA system five years ago.
But practically, they're not going to put it in.
But you know what, the charging station. But you know what? The charging station people should, there's a lot more of them coming out. It's a great amenity to have out of business, so.
But there's a flat roof on that building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so solar.
Solar.
Oh, yeah, they could hold, if it's substantial, then just angle it, flat roofs all the time.
Oh, no, I'm saying because it's flat.
Yeah, oh, oh, okay.
I was saying it was, it's easy enough to do.
Right.
A supermarket uses a lot of electricity.
They sure do.
So, I mean, they would, they would get their money back in a heartbeat.
Which, by the way, brings me up to another point that Kate had mentioned I looked into. Talked about, you know, we'd love to get facade changes to this building. I can't, you know, require that they make facade changes here. But interesting, we do mention this in a previous site plan approval for the site, that, you know, the planning board supports facade changes to the building. But it's, you know, it's just a statement, and we would love to see that.
So this, yeah, I mean, all of this is like just expanding an existing market.
That's all it is.
And we are laying on a lot of site plan changes.
Yeah, we are, we are. But, but, you know, we're trying to get the site functioning. Because on the other side of it, it was, it was messy at times, where picnic tables sitting out there. We have all that cleaned up, and the back even, they repainted. So, so landscaping, I didn't do anything with lighting because they have the lighting that was from the original site plan. Seems to be in conformity.
What do you like signage here, is it on the building?
So, I'm, I put in here. Number two, the changes to the elevations, we just need stamp plans for the floor plans. Any further requirements by the town engineer, so he's going to sign off ultimately on the final plans as required by the Department of Fire Prevention here in town. Number five is a new statement, all signage shall be reviewed and brought into compliance with the requirements of the town code as may be determined by the building department.
What's there now?
So, it's, this is why I put this in here, because Marjorie, I deal with Marjorie on a daily basis with signs. We don't know exactly with stores like this, with window signs. So she said, you know, there could be some signage that needs to be addressed. I said, then I will put in my resolution that all signage that is not legal or needs to be addressed has to be reviewed and approved. We're going to have to add to this, to the resolution, a map change to have the no left turn onto Montauk Highway.
Yeah.
And then you said a second sign.
Yeah, somewhere, wherever you think of.
In the back.
So people know if they want to, even more toward the front, so if they know they're coming out of the parking lot, if they want to go west of Montauk Highway, don't, don't go to that entrance, head to the back.
Gotcha. Alternative access to Montauk Highway through the ground or something, some type of signage.
Montauk Highway westbound.
Westbound, yeah. Okay, I could do that. I'll, I'll add that in there, that's good.
So the signage, we're going to put a catch-all in there because nine times out of ten, a lot of these facilities just have signage that's not legal.
But there's no monument sign, a lawn sign out on the front, is there?
There, I think there is a monument sign sitting out there. I'll have to double-check.
We don't have any.
Am I making that up? Yeah, let's review that. That's a good question.
I presume we're not going to go in.
Yeah, but they've got all this fancy stuff. That's better.
Yeah, there's a truck sitting there, of course. No, I don't see anything, actually.
No, I don't think so.
No. But, you know, there's all sorts of window things going on, so. I never know what Marjorie's going to pick up on, so we'll put it all in there. HBA systems, I just said this includes existing systems that are currently visible. We had a previous site plan that mentioned this, and I think actually they did put something up back there. But we'll make sure. Yeah, something just to cover it.
We had some conversation about the dumpster in the back, which was for everyone, I think, all the tenants, right? It was in a small area in the back, it's not adequate.
Wasn't fenced.
And it wasn't.
Wasn't fenced?
Buffeted, yeah.
Let's take a look at that again.
There.
Yeah.
So then we'll add a condition that the, the existing dumpster.
And it's really not like a dumpster, it's just.
Yeah, it's just a little fireproof thing.
Just a little.
Shall be properly fenced and screened.
And expanded, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Expanded, okay.
I mean, a grocery store is going to have cardboard.
Food waste.
Food waste, all kinds of stuff.
Rotten vegetables.
Yep.
Well, do we? Well, a lot of places like that tends to have like a cardboard dumpster as a, as well as a regular dumpster, right? So some recyclable.
Okay, so then I'll add that and they should show it on the final plan.
New York City is now.
But how do, have we, you know, the terminology, like appropriately sized dumpsters, or?
Dumpsters to accommodate the expanded market use and the other uses that are on the property.
Right, exactly.
And then prior to signature, we need that public cross-access vehicular and pedestrian, along with the title certification, mortgage consent, and any other documents to the satisfaction of the town attorney. The submission and filing of a future pedestrian. Oh, okay, so this one just accounts for the property to the east. In the event that property was ever going to be redeveloped, right now, the bank is there, I'm pretty sure it's a bank building.
We west.
To the.
West, west.
Yes, to the west, sorry. And, so just the future, in case that property gets redeveloped, it's all in there. Submission of the engineering fee, the filing of the affidavit, and then the submission of the six sets of plans for signature, and then the summits of the maintenance bond prior to a CO for the, for the landscaping. So I think with those additions, the dumpster and the changes, I think we got an approval.
Okay, you want an action on this?
Yeah.
I'll move it.
Motion by Dennis, second by George, all in favor, opposed abstention, six in favor, one absent.
Been a while, right?
A lot of good improvement to the site.
Yeah, will be.
Do you have any idea when the town is going to finish that, their, their parking lot next door?
It's a good question. I'll try to find out within the next twenty-four hours and see what's on that site. You know how those things go, they got to go out to bid, and they got to go through the, and they got to, you know, but.
But it's been redesigned.
Designed different than even what you saw previously. Now, it's, there's even more parking going on in the town, so it should be pretty good.
Good. So, the nine-eleven Flanders, want to give us an update on that?
Yeah, just the, the applicants, our, and our consultant is still reviewing and trying to gather as much information. So, the applicant then said, and then we should probably just put this off until we have a report from AKRF, so.
Any specific extension, or?
To, we'll do it to March fourteenth.
To March fourteenth.
Yeah.
Okay, motion? By Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor. I opposed abstention, six in favor, one absent.
Can you just get back to the seat?
No.
Eight Woodridge Road, Eight Woodridge Road, Hampton Bays.
Yes, thank you. Eight Woodridge Road is pre-application for a two-lot subdivision in Hampton Bays. The board is considering completeness and to set the public hearing. The zoning is R-20 and the lot's pre-existing non-conforming, it's point four acres or seventeen thousand six hundred and two square feet. And the proposed subdivided lot to measure eighty-seven hundred sixty-three square feet and eighty-eight hundred thirty-eight square feet.
Were these pre-existing lots submerged?
No, they weren't submerged.
I don't believe so. If you look at the historical.
Yeah. It was always, and it wasn't part of a subdivision or anything like that.
Didn't we talk about the health department and referral to the ZBA, the Sept?
Yeah, it'll have to go through all of that.
Because it's, they're really undersized.
They're undersized. The neighboring, so there's. Yeah, a couple of them have, have been subdivided over time. And a lot of the lots that are already on that block are within range of what the applicant is proposing. They're a little bit smaller, but it's.
It has a look, though, that of two lots that were inadvertently.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if, like, you know.
Well, that map is only from like nineteen eighty-one or nineteen seventy-nine, so they could have done that beforehand.
Maybe before, yeah.
You're right, Dennis, those look like they were two lots at one point.
So those subdivisions took place over forty years ago.
Yes, because now only the, it's these three that are about that size, and the rest are.
Can you do an aerial from thirty years ago or something?
Let's do. This is two thousand and one, but maybe we need to go, let's go to the ninety-six and see. Yeah, I mean, they've been this way for a little while. This is, let's go to the eighties and see if Anthony's. This one here.
That's the seventy-six year?
I'm sorry?
That's the seventy-six year.
It is, yeah.
I don't know, maybe not.
The thirteen, nineteen for thirty is never very clear, so I don't know if that's going to help.
Looks like they were all subdivided way back.
This was a large piece.
It must have been a long time ago, yeah.
What's their, what's their argument at the ZBA on this one?
Well, they, they've applied knowing that they'll have to go to ZBA for minimum lot size relief because they're under twenty thousand. Additionally, I think they'll have to go for lot width because the proposed lots are a hundred feet as opposed to the minimum a hundred and twenty. And then potentially for the proposed dwellings with the principal setbacks, the front and rear setbacks.
I mean, there is a provision in the code to bring in a development right.
Yeah, they do have TDR calcs and pine barren credits on their site plan. The applicant, I believe, is here via Zoom, maybe they could speak to, you know, their intention with the, with the, with the credits, but, yeah.
Well, it's more than TDR, it's, it's, it's a TDR, is it just sewage credits, or?
I don't know.
You know, so my guess, Dennis, is that their argument is the zoning board's going to be a community character. They're going to do an analysis of the lots. But interestingly, the subdivision map has a TDR calculation on there. My guess is, is that TDR calculation is for health department purposes, for sanitary flow. But like we do in all these case cases, we prepare a, you know, pre-app report, and it says to the zoning board, this section of the code says, in order for you to grant the variance, they have to demonstrate that they've exhausted all their opportunities to transfer a development right to this piece. The way I look at it, if you need a development right for the sanitary flow credit, then bring in your development right to do the subdivision.
Yes, to do the subdivision.
And it's got to be within the same school district.
A lot of times the sanitary flow, it isn't a development right, it's.
It, it, it's strictly for health department.
Yeah.
And when there's no question as to our density, we don't care then. If it's just a health department issue, then let them deal with it. But here it is a density question, so development right.
These are a little over eight thousand square feet, these lots.
They're very small.
I mean, they're tiny.
I mean, just cite the whole section of the code, it's the density incentive provision of the code, two undersized lots, you have to bring in the development right, and you actually, your setbacks are around, they drop down to, excuse me, the R-15.
If they do that, and they're willing to do affordable housing, they don't have to go to the zoning board.
No, no, not affordable housing, is that right?
No, they can do a transfer to go, and to get the relief to create two undersized lots.
Right.
But you still have to go to the zoning board to create those lots. There's a provision that says if you do it for affordable housing, the planning board could have done it. But you.
You don't have to go to the, you don't need relief if you do, if you bring in a transfer of development right. But the, how large is, how big is the overall piece?
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand.
It is, how much?
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen, it's already under.
It has to be one and a half times the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is woefully under.
Fred and I discussed this, so, you know, they noted the transfer development right and on that map, and the report that gets prepared is going to outline that the mechanism for this is through a transfer, you know, a TDR.
So what's our action here?
It's really to deem it complete and schedule the hearing.
It is complete?
The application itself, yeah, is complete.
Did we have a pre-submission conference yet? Oh, this is for pre-.
This is for pre-.
Can you go back to the area one more time, please?
Oh, yeah.
If you just zoom in, thank you. Anthony, I don't know if there's a way to figure this out or not, but, you know, how many of those lots were created before the zoning was put into effect? In other words, have all those other lots come before the planning board? And the planning boards, you know, allowed them to be subdivided, as opposed to how many of those lots were there before the zoning was there?
Good question.
That was probably filed in the sixties.
I think the two lots to the right of it.
The one immediately to the right was definitely divided.
I'm not seeing any planning board subdivisions here, so.
How far back does it go, does your reg?
Well, that map goes back to, that's either eighty-one or the seventies, but.
The map probably goes back to the sixties, right?
So, right here, they're not showing a subdivision, which is not uncommon. These could just be a grid of described property that was filed way back in the day without a subdivision map, so.
So the area, the, you know, comment of precedent, or, you know, whether it be established is, if the planning board approved all those others, then there's precedent.
Yeah.
If these were created before.
You're going to treat this like it's a subdivision of any other subdivision.
Okay, so we're deeming complete and setting a public hearing for when, and what date?
Oh, twenty-eighth of March, please.
I'll move it.
Okay, motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed abstention, six in favor, one absent.
I mean, it's consistent with the area, that's the thing, you know what I mean by?
Yeah, from the health student point of view.
I think the question is whether those were created before we had zoning.
I think they were.
And it sounds like it.
Yes, it sounds like, exactly like it. Okay, Anthony, you are State of Madeline Cuomo, and that's three and five Seashore Avenue, six Ocean Avenue, and three-three-three Montauk Highway, thanks Quog.
Yeah, this is why I took this over, another one. This, this has been going on for decades. It's this lot, the front lot, this lot, this lot, and this lot. It's four lots to begin with, it's going to be four lots when it's over. It's a sort of a lot line change between them. No access off of Montauk Highway, two of the lots will be accessed off of this road, two of the lots will be accessed off of this road. So, you know, we've done multiple pre-applications, a final application finally came in. They have health department, ownership has changed hands. So this has been all sorts of delays, but we got a final application and finally, which basically looks like what you're seeing here, see for.
Those two roads are private roads, right?
Yes, they're private roads. So basically, you're going to have a reconfiguration, there's going to be two lots on Montauk Highway, and then the two lots in the back, but none of them are being accessed off of Montauk Highway. Street trees are shown to go in there, so whatever work was done, some buffer easements in the back here were required.
Did they submit a cluster?
Was not required because it was, there's no density being created as a result of the subdivision. It's just a lot line change.
Isn't that a submission, oh, it's a lot, but it's a submission requirement, isn't it?
Well, yeah, but the planning board waived that requirement when the application came in.
We did?
Yeah.
This was the site of a notorious underground nightclub called The Cave.
There you go.
I'm the last one that remember, the only other two people who remembered it is me and John Blaney, God rest his soul. I'm it. I'm the last historian.
That's okay. So I'm just recommending that we deem this application complete, schedule the hearing for March twenty-eighth.
Okay, motion by Craig, second by Gloria, all in favor. Opposed abstention, six in favor, one absent.
Is The Cave still there? No.
Anthony, we are at three-fourteen North McGee Street, Tuckahoe.
Yep. So we have, and we looked at this already, deemed it incomplete previously. We have a subdivision application for this property on North McGee Street. This is town-owned open space behind the property. Previously, you know, they came in with a four-lot plan, a cluster plan with open space in the back, next to the town, and this little weird thing in the back. That'll probably be one of my comments in my report, is that we could create. That'll probably be one of my comments in my report, is that we could create a buffer here, but we're going to put the open space in the back.
Exactly.
But we needed a yield map. They gave me a yield map. There is a problem with the yield map. The problem with the yield map is the, the yield map shows four, but it doesn't have four conforming lots. So I said this too. I let Carl Benincosta know that. It may, it may get it on, you know, a redesign or something, but it, it, this may be an issue that their plan is going to be three lots as opposed to four, and that could come out of my, the pre-app report. But, you know, this, the configuration of the lot has now makes this front lot difficult.
Yeah.
Especially when you add a road, and Carl's aware of this, that this, this could go down there with three lots.
Is there designated parkland on that four-lot map?
Yield map probably not.
Do you yield?
No, no.
They don't have any on here.
I think they have to show that too, on the yield map.
The, the way it's been done, is my understanding, Dennis, is that if you're going to require park land as part of a subdivision, you, you take it out of your yield. If the planning board's going to require payment of a park fee and not set aside any land here, that, that's been my understanding.
But we haven't made that determined. Well, you know, Dave would be the one to check with this because I've always understood that on yield maps, they have to show the parkland, in addition to conforming lots.
Yeah, a hundred percent. So what I can do is, we're not under any deadlines because we deemed it incomplete previously. I could pull this and I'll, I'll have them work on that.
Yeah, check with Dave about that parkland.
So the yield, does it show open space? I thought it was just cluster.
Well, the yield is supposed to show technically an area dedicated for park. The whole concept behind this standard yield plan is that it's supposed to be a real subdivision design that, that accounts for a park calculated based on the number of lots. So it's not like it would be, you know, a two acre. It's going to be five thousand square feet, but I, but Dennis is right. It should show it on there then.
So this is R twenty?
It's our, R forty zone.
Is this, they're three-fourteen North McGee Street?
Yeah, I have the wrong zoning number.
It says R twenty.
Oh, that's, that's a mistake. Sorry about that.
R forty.
But we, it was deemed incomplete previously, and I'll, I'll go speak to Dave about this whole park requirement, then maybe we'll.
And what's their preferred plan as the cluster, right?
The, the preferred plan is the cluster, but we, but we're not at four March yet. Well, we, we'll pull this and I'll, I'll let the application.
Okay, so no action.
You don't have to do anything with that.
Okay. Seth, you have Busel four?
Yes, I'm hoping to set a pre-submission con, excuse me. I'm hoping to set the pre-submission conference for March twenty-eighth. Busel is thirteen sixty-eight, Spionk Riverhead Road. The applicant wishes to put an accessory five thousand square foot building in the, sorry, one moment, I'll pull them up. We've been in this area many times. The, this is a architectural glass manufacturer, special contractor here. And there is our famous hazardous waste cleanup site. At any rate, they plan to put a five thou, fifty by one hundred accessory unit in the back in this area here, which conforms with the accessory setbacks. However, due to its size, it is subject to SECRAs as it is type two. So we are.
How about clearing? It's in the APOD and the central project.
Yes, it is precisely. They did, they did mention they will be overclearing by a, a small portion. I don't have my note. But that they will be submitting a landscape plan to re-vegetate at once the site is constructed.
Yeah, that's backwards. Yeah, that's backwards.
Okay. Maybe I misunderstood. That could be on me. So it will be on a slab for the DEC. Yeah, I have a map. Let's look at the map. Take one up and I'll check it out myself.
What have they cleared now, fifty percent?
How much have they cleared, Anthony?
They're allowed fifty percent.
They're saying that they're at forty-seven percent.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And that they'll be at fifty point seven percent with that requiring an area of re-vegetation of fifteen eighty-two.
What, what size is the building that's there now?
Thirty thousand square feet.
Okay.
It's a big one. They're proposing five thousand. This, this other one.
So a six, a six of the size of what the existing building?
Yes.
Seth, can you give a chance, can you use them in a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good. Let's see what we got here.
How do they get five thousand more feet on there and only get the?
Hundred and forty feet.
Around fifty percent clearing. Doesn't seem right, right?
Yeah.
It's not passing the eye test.
So they want to clear and then re-vegetate.
Right.
Visually order first thing. They have to clear more, I would think.
Then, but that's not.
That's not the way to go.
Well, it's worse than that because they're showing twelve land bank parking spaces, which means if you have to allow that, then you're going to be even more clear. But this is a pre-submission conference. What I would say is those issues have to be identified.
Yeah.
Who is the applicant, Seth?
The applicant is.
Busel?
Well, I've been dealing with Vince, Rayner Group, Vincent Giadelli, Giadello.
It's the Hampton.
And then the owner is the, the owner is the, is the, who owns the architectural glass company. Don't have his name in front of me. Paul Siller is his name. So we have it backwards then on the land. They're overclearing. They need to come in with a landscape plan.
They have to come in with a plan that doesn't overclear.
Conforms to the clearing. They conform to the.
Because they have parking.
They'd have to go to the.
And they have to go to.
Do you want to have a time bar as a sure, but do you want to proceed with the pre-submission conference?
No, I don't think so.
Well, you have to because this is way, this is how you tell them all these things. This is how you have to tell them the project's not going to work.
It's not a completeness.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not even in formal application, so you know what, let's get this stuff outlined.
The only way we can tell them that this isn't going to fly is through a pre-submission conference.
All right.
Pull it all out.
And we can maybe take care of that before the pre-submission conference, now that it's out in the air.
Well.
Or, or look into it. Okay, so.
Well, you can certainly have a conversation with them.
Absolutely. So we will set the pre-submission conference for the twenty-eighth of March.
Sure.
Motion by Craig, second by Dennis, all in favor.
And that's for March third, twenty-eighth.
Six, six in favor, one absent. That's it.
So we have four.
For March twenty-eighth.
March twenty-eighth.
Do you have anything more, Anthony? Two hundred West Montauk Highway, Hampton Bays.
Yeah, this is one we also previously deemed incomplete. This is not mine. But it's that long skinny lot in Hampton Bays. Right next to McDonald's, yep, that's correct. Existing building, they're looking to convert it to, I believe, at the furniture store use. We previously deemed the application incomplete.
Is this where they're, they want to have a nail salon and?
There was a bunch of uses in there or something. So I. You know, they had to dimension off some stuff that we didn't have. Some of the detail sheets that we didn't have. But, yeah, it looks like they, they are doing some reconfiguration of the parking in there because it looks a little sloppy. But it looks like we have everything we need now, so I was going to recommend that we deem this application complete. We did a pre-submission on this. Public didn't show up. So it's up to this board if you want to have a hearing on this site plan or waive it with a thirty day.
Do you have a pre-submission report for us to look at?
Well, it was adopted previously. Whoever the planner reviewed this previously did it with this board.
How long ago?
Probably less than a year. They, the requirement is that they're supposed to get a formal site plan in within one year of a pre-submission conference, so.
So they're within that timeframe?
Yeah, they're within that timeframe. So it's really up to the board. Like I said, the public didn't come out on this one, so.
I'm trying to think of where, how, where it is visually.
Right next to McDonald's and Shop and Stop, Stop and Shop.
Oh, that little building.
It was a cane repair shop.
Yeah, furniture repair. These, these caning furniture.
There was a few things in there.
So it's a very narrow.
It's a very narrow lot.
Very narrow.
And what's, what's the?
Cross axis, all of that?
What's this, the driveway space to the edge of the building to the, to the property line to get to the back parking?
You have to be airlifted in.
The McDonald's side, I think they have access from McDonald's.
There is a driveway going to the east of the building, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It seems very narrow, but just.
The Stop and Shop is right behind it.
Yeah, all the way to the back, and the pound is right next to it.
Yeah, it is narrow. I, I don't have a dimension actually, but it is existing, so. But, yeah, you're right. That is the site though. But it's really up to this board if you want to have a hearing. I, I don't have a party either way. When we have public that comes out on these things in a pre-submission, you know, then it's sort of.
Well, it's commercial, so.
What's it, it looks like open space to its west.
It's EAC, didn't?
Hampton Bay Civic, didn't?
They're clearly pretty active.
I mean, it's, I shouldn't say.
That's the town. It's community preservation property. Oh, it's a big piece, yeah. There we go.
Can you blow up the site a little bit and increase it? It's to the west of that, yeah, that's that. Gosh, and where's the?
The McDonald's exit, if you come out of McDonald's, you actually use the, they, they share the same exit on Montauk Highway.
When you're coming out of the exit, you have to really have to look both ways when you're coming out.
Exactly.
And the action here.
It's complete and it's, we deemed it incomplete previously, so they came up with revised plans.
One of the things you might try and do.
And they want to put a nail salon on the first floor and office on the second?
Yes.
Because right now it's anti-furniture and repair.
Yeah, because they have a home goods.
So is this a guy used to a wet use or what?
Well, nail salons are wet.
Yeah.
Yeah, nail salon, and that's probably why they also have. Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's what they're showing. Nail salon, home goods, and then offices on the second floor. Raises, you know, the question, it's going to raise the question of the septic system again.
Yeah.
Only because I don't know, the, the uses have changed over time. Here was ever wet use in there because now you have an issue with the nail salon.
Yes.
I think this could benefit from the public.
I do too.
I think, yeah.
It's APOD, it's, yeah.
Gives us some time to look at it. There's some real opportunities, yeah.
So what's the next one?
We'll do April.
We'll get into April.
Let's do it March fourteenth.
I don't know if Kerry has enough time to, we'll do April.
Yeah.
We'll do April.
What, what's the April date?
Eleven.
Eleven.
That works.
Okay, so we're deeming it complete and scheduling a public hearing for April eleven. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. Yes. One, one session. Okay, Anthony, Maple Residence Subdivision thirteen Maple Avenue in Hampton Bays.
This is just, and I can't open up the resolution for some reason. Does anybody have one? It was in the packet. Only because I had my date in there and I can't open up the resolutions from the.
It's not printed out? No.
I just want to know what date I said in the resolution.
April twentieth.
April twentieth?
Perfect.
Extension.
Going to the rest.
So we're going to do an extension, a submission of the final maps for signature until April twentieth.
Okay, motion, opposed by Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor. Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. Ocean View Parkway.
April twentieth is, April twentieth is a Saturday. That's the twenty-fifth?
That was the date.
That, that, an extension of, that's okay. It's a, it's a date.
Yeah, okay.
That date's fine.
April twentieth is fine.
Yeah, it's okay.
So nine, Ocean View Parkway, Anthony, you want to?
Yeah, I got to put that on for the fourteenth. It's an old filed map, but I, I got to make sure there's no discrepancies.
Okay, so we're, it's an extension or not? No, no action.
It's an approved development search.
Approved development, thank you, yeah.
He's checking all the numbers. Number ten is off. Gaspar and Deverre Torezzi.
Yep.
So that was supposed to be signed, of course.
Lewis Road was signed.
Yeah.
Sabonic Cottage was signed, acknowledging.
Is that, is that, is that what Sabo, is that Sabonic there?
No, that, that's for, for the evening session.
Okay, so I've only signed Lewis Road.
Yeah.
And Sabonic Cottage has not been signed?
I don't. I'll double check that to, but she didn't say anything to me.
You didn't say, you didn't say.
I did not. The only thing, I, I came in yesterday and I signed Lewis Road.
Okay, so we'll take Sabonic off, and you've got, we have two more walk-ons. Number thirteen would be Howard Irrevocable Trust. It's an extension.
That's on Neuyach Road.
Yes, we're trying to, it's the health department. We're trying to work out sanitary flow to get this apartment. So we're, we're working with Dave on seeing what we, yeah, we're trying to get an affordable unit here. The health department says, great, bring in a flow credit then. They don't do density incentive. They just don't acknowledge it, so. So we're going to do an extension of this one until March fourteenth.
Motion, motion, Dennis, by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent, and then the latest is Chickenbrier Hill.
Yep, so, yes, so we did the approval. I got the map signed. Everything's good. I took this over for another planner, and we had the open space dedication, and Dennis raised this question at the time about the park fee. Because sometimes we, the open space dedication will satisfy the park if there's going to be or potentially be some type of trail or something like that. So the way it was written was the way the pre-app was written, so I just put the park fee in there. Subsequent to that, you know, they, I don't know, someone reached out to Dave Wilcox, who was sort of going through. We didn't have Trails Advisory Comments during the pre-application, at which time they said that there is trail connection potential in here. However, they didn't say that during the final application, so I just sort of proceeded with the way I was doing it. But as, you know, Dave was saying, there actually are trails down here, trails down here. We have a trail easement that goes through here for the residents of the subdivision and town-owned land here, and there was some, we have a subdivision on one of these properties to the north, which they talked about potential trail connection. So Dave just said, you know, perhaps you go back to the planning board, let them know of this, and then the only action here would be today would be to modify that approval to eliminate the payment of the park fee in lieu of the open space that was dedicated and the potential for the trail.
And the town's taking the open space.
Town's already taken it.
Taken it.
Yeah, they've already did the hearing and already got the deed, so.
Shouldn't we get something from Trails Advisory though?
I, I could get something from them, yes. Would you feel more comfortable?
Yeah, I think just have, just to have you in the record.
But to be quite honest, it's, it's just a matter of getting a refund for them. Maps have already been signed, so I don't think that's an issue. I'll get something from them.
Yeah, this way, otherwise they'll be lined up after the board.
So our action is what?
Now, you don't have to. He's just asking me to get something, so.
Okay, so no action.
All right, Jackie, without you killing me, just one more thing. The Estates at Remsenberg, I just had John Vorkwin here. He just wants two minutes of your time to update you on something relating to the maintenance bond because that's coming down the pike, and I've taken this over, and it's a very confusing subdivision. So if you're going to give two minutes for the Estates at Remsenberg, but no action.
Is that the one Nijin and?
Nijin and. Nijin and, yeah, actually, I just got the Blacksmith Building legal document, so.
Good afternoon, all, thank you for having me. This is John Borkwin, Egan and Golden, twenty-two hundred Montauk Highway in Bridgehampton for the Estates at Remsenberg. So just to give you a very brief overview of what's transpired, I'm sure you all are aware of the subdivision, the subdivision itself was approved in 2016, the town is currently holding a letter of credit for three hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, that is a performance bond for road work and landscaping, all final conditional approval items for the subdivision. The work in the subdivision is virtually complete, street trees have been put in, the road has been paved, I believe something around sixty percent of the lots are already improved and inhabited with people living in dwellings. The Benkelman Beam Test for the road and the refract, refructivity of the road, the hardness of the road, if you will, was completed in July of 2022. Ultimately, my client would like a resolution deeming the road complete and to have his maintenance bond reduced to fifty thousand dollars, and possibly converted to a maintenance bond rather than a performance bond. I have had some productive conversations with both Mr. Trezza and Mr. Houghton Engineering, I did not want to circumnavigate or circumvent this board, so I figured I would come and get it on everyone's radar, and if there's anything that we could do to, to work towards that end.
We typically do that, I think that comes through the engine, town engineer.
Comes through the engineer, I just think, he submitted this request a while ago, and I've been sort of back and forth trying to figure out, the engineer, just think he wanted to get this on the planning board's radar, so that he's comfortable that you know the maintenance bond is coming and it's, you know, he's.
So there's no action for us to do now? Well, we don't have a report, anyway.
I'm gonna get something from Tom Houghton, so my plan is to try to get something within the next, for the next meeting, so that way he can get a maintenance.
Has the road been dedicated to the town as yet?
Not yet, but that is in progress, I know one of.
We have to do the last inspection, that's what he's waiting for.
The last inspection.
The most recent inspection that I know of, and I'm not sure if this was the most recent inspection, this is just what I'm aware of, was the year 2020, and since then we've had the Benkelman Beam Test, my office has drafted the covenants and restrictions needed for some drainage easements there, so we have substantial completion on this subdivision.
Just to let you know on that, things happen, but as part of the road construction, I think two drainage structures wound up on properties, so what happened was, the engineer said, now I need to get drainage easements on these properties, so that's what we're finalizing as well, just so the board knows.
Unless we've worked on, we have the meets and bounds done, the proposed easements are ready.
And there, there's a trail easement that connects to Matthews, right?
I believe so.
And I, and I believe, and I know this intimately, because I used to run through there, there are a couple of green giants there that are blocking the run path, and I'm getting a gut because of that, so I blame you and your client.
I can have them looking on that.
Do not remove the trees.
The green giants on the.
Sawzall.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us, and if anyone has any questions.
Nope.
It's pretty routine.
Yes.
I'll catch you on.
We just need them.
Motion to adjourn. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Six in favor, one absent, we are adjourned.